I would like to now officially open the Select Board meeting of August 10th and begin with the 6:30 PM executive session. And have the Assistant Town Administrator read the agenda for the executive session.
Good evening. Tonight's executive session is to discuss strategy with respect to threatened potential litigation. If the Chair so declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the Select Board in the town. And the Chair does so declare to discuss the matter of five star building court. Versus the town of Sherburne pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 38. Section 21A, 3 and 7. And Suffolk Construction versus Decam 449 Mass 444 (2007) Sherburne Library.
Okay, and I do so declare that we need to address this issue in executive session. So I move that we go to executive session. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Eric.
Hi.
Steven.
Hi.
Marion.
Hi.
Paul.
Hi.
And I am I as well. So let's see here. I'm not a host, so turn the recording off. And I would now like to open the open session of Sherburne Select Board of August 10th, 2023. At 7:00 PM and ask Assistant Town Administrator, please read the open session agenda.
Good evening. After I get through reading the agenda, the Select Board can vote to amend or approve the agenda. There is a public comment section. And items may be taken out of order and topics not anticipated 48 hours in advance may be added. Item number one is to review and act upon an open meeting law complaint by Robert Murchison dated July 28, 2023. Concerning the North Sherburne Water District Working Group. Item number two is an update on the legislation for the North Sherburne Water Sewer District. Revision of draft legislation, revised public information document and draft special town meeting warrant article. Item number three is acceptance of a bond anticipation note award Heidi Doyle, a town treasurer. Item number four is consideration of supporting OPEB funding policy Heidi Doyle, town treasurer. Item number five is special town meeting October 17th, 2023. Review of draft warrant articles. Item number eight is a consideration of appointments to the Agricultural Commission. Richard Robertson, who will be a reappointment for a term to expire June 15, 2026. The consent agenda is item number seven, which is the payroll warrant, draft minutes of 7:27, 23. And the next scheduled meeting of the Select Board is August 24th, 2023. And then item number eight is consideration of routine business, like what reports and town administrative reports.
Excellent. Thank you. Do I have a motion with respect to the agenda?
Yeah, I would like to move to modify the agenda.
What do you propose?
I'd like to move number five up before number three. So essentially you're clustering those because as you know, I step out into the waiting room for items one, two and five. And along with that will go my usual apology to Heidi as I bump her yet again.
Yep. And do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of the amended agenda, which reads 1, 2, 5, 3, 4, 6, 7, 8? Eric.
Well, I made, oh, I, yep.
Steven.
Hi.
Marion.
Hi.
Oh. Hi.
I am I as well. Okay, so that's the order that we'll do it in. So you can take a hike, Eric, and I'll text you in a little bit.
Someone just put me in the waiting room, please. Maybe Diane put me in the waiting room. Okay.
There you go. All right. So now we're ready to start the opening session with item one, which is act on open meeting law complaint dated July 28, 23. Do I have a motion on respect to this item?
Yes. By way of explanation, our current town council had worked for the town of Framingham, so the issue involving the North Sherburne Water District involves the town of Framingham, so he is not available to assist the board, so I move that we refer this matter to Special Counsel. Tom Mullin. To handle.
Okay, is there a second?
I second.
Okay, Steven.
Hi.
Marion.
Hi.
Paul.
Hi.
You know, I am I as well.
Okay. Real quick, I don't know why, but Eric is actually not in the waiting room right now. I see his camera. He's not sitting in his chair, but but he's obviously not in the waiting room.
Someone must have let him back in. Okay, thanks for letting me know. He's a truant. So the next item is update on the Sherburne Water District legislation. Marion, do you want to take the lead on that? Or Jeremy?
Sure. Are you finished with item one?
We are, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, you may recall that a few weeks ago, we presented a draft of legislation. We presented the main points of legislation creating a North Sherburne Water District. And the discussion was heated and very useful. We've continued to discuss within the working group that is not a committee, but a working group under our town administrator, Jeremy, to try to incorporate some of the concerns that people had, especially potential of butters. And to keep the, but also to keep the goal of getting this water district in place in mind. So we've, we will post or perhaps have already posted on the town website a public information statement that summarizes the main provisions of the bylaw of the revised bylaw that we're now bringing back for public discussion. And I'd like to just run through where it stands now, if you'll let me share my screen.
Yeah, go ahead, Marion.
Okay. Okay, let me just move up to the first slide and get full of you. I'm not going to try to start from scratch because I just don't want to take time that we took quite a bit of time last time. I'm going to close the little thumbnail people. And maybe if others can do so, you'll be able to see this whole slide very well, I hope. We're trying to get water and sewer from Framingham to service two developments that have already been approved by a town. By the town, one age restricted and one rental development, which is 25% affordable, but will get the town over its 10% goal to say for that the state has set for us. So Framingham is providing, tentatively providing both water and sewer from Kendall down Coolidge Street. And the big issue has been and will be, who gets to plug into this water and sewer? And we have a lot of considerations that we have to take into account here. So let me run through the things that we have to bear in mind. First of all, as I said, these projects, we want to happen. It's already been agreed by the town. We need to get a sewer district in place in order to get MWRI water. And for the developer that's currently Toll Brothers, but maybe another one committed to build these projects. So if they build these, if they agree to build these projects, the developer will install and pay for the water and sewer pipes from Framingham. It will not be on the town budget to pay for these things. It's very expensive. The total volume of water will be defined by the intra municipal agreement with Framingham. And there are limits to what Framingham is willing to provide. And there are also limits to the amount of infrastructure in Framingham that the developer is willing to contribute to. So those are constraints of basically water volume and sewer pipe volume. Once these developments are built and we have a water and sewer district in place, the developer will transfer ownership of the infrastructure to the district. And the district is not the town. It's a separate legal entity under state law that'll be created by this legislation. So the town at no point will own the infrastructure. And there won't be any impact on property taxes for a butters or anyone else, basically. So those are the, those are the that's the bottom line conditions that we're dealing with in trying to design an equitable and workable water and sewer district legislation and inter municipal agreement. So we've continued discussions. There've been discussions in and among all these people, including the developer with Framingham concerning the infrastructure that Framingham needs and the volume of water they could provide. The working group under Jeremy has had discussions with our special legal counsel and with our state representatives, who are, I must say, very enthusiastic about this and are willing to support the legislation at the state. We have drafted and redrafted legal documents with Special Town Counsel, and the final version is still in draft form and under revision. So we have drafts of the legislation and the inter municipal agreement. And we've scheduled a fall town meeting on October 17th to see if the town will agree to allow the Select Board to submit the legislation to the state. And of course, if the legislation is submitted, we will need to have authorization to enter into an IMA from Framingham, which does not require a town meeting vote, but we certainly want town meeting support for it. So, okay, what are the provisions? The developer is paying for all of this, paying for the infrastructure. There are properties on Kendall, basically the farm and the Gagin property across from the farm. And the condo development Sherburne Meadows that are already on Framingham water, they have to be automatically in the district. And of course, the new developments. So as it stands now, the developer has agreed to pay for the connections to these developments. So this will be our initial water district legislation boundaries. And that doesn't mean that the district is cast in stone, as you'll see. But let me move forward a bit. So for properties already in the district service area or added in the future, if there's no change of use, that is for from a single family home to a multifamily structure or from a farm to a housing development, if there's no change of use. The they can, existing structures can be altered with no, if, as long as there's no increase in residential units or change of use, that doesn't require any special permission. If there's a change of use, then a two thirds affirmative vote at town meeting and approval by the district commission is required. The town meeting vote, because the town has, needs to have a say in where development happens and what kind of development we get. And approval by the district commission, because the commission will be in charge of how much water is available and how it should be distributed and how it's going to be paid for. Now, last time, we discussed in detail whether properties abutting the new water lines should be included. And without a town meeting vote. And we concluded that yes, they should be eligible to hook into the water and sewer pipes with a simple application to the Select Board and to the district commission. That's not a high bar. And any property can can request to be hooked up. And as long as they fund it themselves, the developer can't be expected to fund all this. They will be able to join the district. And as they do, and if they do, the boundaries of the district will change. Potentially, the district could be this big. It could include all the properties if everyone opts to join in and pay for the connection. So what about properties that do opt to join? If there's no change in use, it's fairly simple. Approval by the Select Board and the district commission. If there's a change of use, then that still requires a two thirds vote at town meeting and approval by the commission for the same reasons I mentioned before. So this is the working group that has been working with the town administrator to try to draft the provisions of the legislation. And we understand it's still a draft. And this isn't a, an official town committee. We just have looked for people that can contribute thoughts and get input from various boards, from various boards and committees in the town. So I'm taking it back to you and I'll stop sharing my screen, or I can go back to any slide that you want to see again. So we can just open it up to the rest of the Select Board at this point.
Yeah, I think stop sharing probably, then we can see people better, Marion. Thank you for the summary. Jeremy, did you want to make any introductory comments before we see if there's others with input?
Sure. Marion did an excellent job giving the summary. Just a couple of things to point out. In, in the Select Wars packet, in the public packet, additionally, there's a public information or summary of information on this proposal, which we would like to kind of finalize and get out for public consumption. So if you have any comments on that, please let us know. But it's our intent to get this much more, this document out and publicly available. As far as the draft legislation, we would, it's the intent to have it you know, very finalized prior to town meeting, so that when town meeting acts, they know what they're acting on. They have, you know, the final version of what the selectmen may ultimately submit for special legislation, you know, minus some typos or something. But we would hope to have that completed relatively shortly, so that, you know, town meeting would have the benefit of seeing that finalized document.
I think not just town meeting, but Dan Sickles here, but I forget the date of advisory public hearing, but I think we would like to have the language be pretty much nailed down on that date also, because that gets fairly high attendance. Do you know offhand, Dan, what the date for the advisory hearing is?
Advisory hearing is? Everybody. So the advisory hearing is set for September 27th, which is a Wednesday. And the hope is that the presentation to advisory, you know, sort of describing to advisory all of warrant articles, what happened on September 13th. So hoping that there would be final or nearly final versions by September 13th.
Okay, that's an advisory meeting on the 13th?
Yes. Also a Wednesday.
Yep.
Oh, Jeff, can I add something as well?
Sure, go ahead, Marion.
Yeah, one thing that I didn't mention is that the working group struggled with the possibility that there may be a butters who want to be in the water district right from the very start, right from the beginning. And given the fact that Toll Brothers is paying for and engineering it and planning the entire construction, this is not the town doing it. We thought that that is fair. If any butters want to be in on the infrastructure right in the beginning, they should negotiate that directly with Toll Brothers. And if the if the water capacity is sufficient, and if there's an agreement to join with Toll Brothers in installing the basic infrastructure and the main lines and everything, people are, should be able to do that. And if anybody wants the Toll Brothers contact information, we're happy to share that. Whatever we can do to facilitate it is just fine, but it's not up to the town to decide that. It's up to the company that's installing the infrastructure.
Okay, thanks, Marion. Steven.
Thanks. You had mentioned that, you know, essentially any of the existing butters can potentially join the water district with a simple application. But I would imagine if all of the butters that are potentially, you know, in that boundary that you drew out, if they all were like, oh, yes, we all want to go in, that would be a lot more water to provide than Framingham is currently planning on. So wouldn't, wouldn't the city of Framingham have to be sort of in on the decision because it would affect how they supply the water?
Why, yeah, I'm sure Jeremy could answer this, but the answer is that the amount of water, the baseline amount of water that we're talking to Framingham about, then the absolute necessity amount of water includes the two developments, but also all of the butters at their current level of use.
I see.
So at their current use, everyone can sign up. And going forward, I don't know exactly what these, this language would be. Jeremy and Framingham would have to help with this, but that amount of water that would serve the butters' current use will be held as sacrosanct and in reserve to be sure that if they need to plug in or want to plug in, that the water will be available.
Paul, did you have a question?
Yeah, I, I'm just trying to understand something. So I'm in a butter and I say I want to join. And I join by the simple process. 10 years later, I sell to Pulte Homes and they want to put 150 units on my property. But I'm already a member of the district.
Yes, you know, we did anticipate that. And so the language of the legislation is, I don't have the exact words here, but the existing use is defined in the legislation as the use as of the date the legislation was submitted or approved. We'll see what's legal to do there. Perhaps our counsel can weigh in on that one.
Yeah, so we are going to ask the legislature to provide that the existing use be defined as of the date of the submission of the legislation. And should any butter thereafter, who is a member of the district, wish to increase the intensity of its use by, for example, subdividing or doing a 40B project or even using an A and R plan, they would, they would have to go to town meeting. They'd have to get a two thirds vote at town meeting.
Even though they're already members of the district.
They're already members of the district for, and they're entitled to continue at the current level of intensity. But if they want to increase that intensity, then they have to go through this further step.
Thank you.
Yeah, that allows the, the town as a whole to have some overview of how that water is used. Of course, the district knows what the absolute maximum of water the Framingham can supply. But the town needs to be sure that people who are at their current use and want to join can join at the use that we know now that that is the sort of number that's setting the level of the negotiation with Framingham and the level of the volume of water that Framingham is willing to provide. Jeremy, do you have something to add to that?
I think it's, so the inter municipal agreement actually will be the kind of the cap. That's the agreement that would be between the town of Sherburne, Framingham and the water district. And in that, it's going to have sort of the cap amount of capacity for water and the sewer provisions for sanitary sewer. The volume will be capped through that agreement. And then, you know, and that, that, as Marion said, would include the two proposed developments and the existing uses within this area. You know, any, anything, any change or connection to would require sort of a permit or a connection approval through the commission and or the Select Board. And for a change of use would require town meeting action as well.
I think if I understand, Jeremy, Toll Brothers and the town for the inter municipal agreement are with Framingham are envisioning a whatever percentage that Framingham is willing to provide over that basic need that we have now, the two developments plus the butters at current use. There will be some wiggle room there, but there is a cap. And we don't yet know what that is. So we have to be careful that the water up to that cap is, is spent wisely, if you like to put it that way.
Right. And that, that volume, that cap on volume, the city of Framingham has some mitigation sort of entry fees that they've been negotiating with Toll Brothers. That, those fees, the entirety of those fees are, are proposed to be financed by Toll Brothers. So, you know, the existing uses in this area would not in the future have to pay that additional mitigation charge to the city of Framingham. It would have already been paid by the developer. So that's a upfront benefit for the, the properties within this area.
Right? Just having this infrastructure in place is a big plus for the properties in the area, because there's been, you know, a lot of concern about potential contamination, general chemical and all that. And this, this provides all of the butters basically a safety mechanism to get water for their current use in the future.
It's not to say that the residents or properties that would wish to connect in the future wouldn't have some expenses. They would need to to pay the charge, you know, hire a contractor, have engineering plans submitted, hire a contractor, actually do the connection, the water service, water meter, all those expenses would be the costs would be borne by the property owners proposing to connect. But the IMA would have already set in place, you know, a certain volume to be provided to this area of the town.
So can I try another scenario? So I'm a property owner in the district. Jeff, is it okay?
No, go ahead, Paul.
So I'm a property owner, I'm already in the district. And so I decide to subdivide my land and put another house there. As long as I do a private well and a private septic system, I don't need to bother with the district at all. I'm free to do whatever I want. So if I want to put 156 units in there, I can drill my own well and put my own septic system.
Correct, to current zoning and current local regulation. Yep.
Yeah, you'd have to get it through the Board of Health and the Conservation Commission and all the other hoops that every development has to go through.
Okay, now I'm just trying to see how far the the restrictions go. So it's only, only as to the use of the water. The restrictions are limited just to the use of the water. And I assume the use of the sewers.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, Bob? You mind just introducing yourself? I know there's some people here that aren't regular attendees.
Sure. I'm Bob Murchison, and I live on Lake Street, and I am a property owner on Coolidge Street. I have several questions, so if you can bear with me, Mr. Chair, I'd appreciate it. The first is for Marion and Jeremy, and that is the, the discussion with Framingham about the amount of water. My understanding is the discussion is around 50,000 or 60,000 gallons per day at this point, give or take. And I'm just curious, have we asked, actually asked Framingham? And I'm just curious, have we asked, actually asked Framingham what the maximum amount of water that they could allow us potentially to take? And is this kind of 50 or 60 number a limit provided by them? Or is it something that we kind of said, hey, that's about all we want? I'd like to understand how that kind of conversation went.
It, if I may, it, it's more of the latter. It's more of considering the two proposed developments in this area and looking at what would need, be needed to service those, those properties. And that was what the prior developer had approached the city of Framingham with as far as a volume and had become conversations with the city of Framingham about water supply. That's what they, they looked at, had a period view engineer look at the impact their system and, and come, came up with the, you know, what, what sort of impacts there may be to their system and develop this connection charge to help offset some of their prior capital expenditures in, in their system. So the, the question, the, the question of how much in total could they ultimately provide has not been asked, that hasn't been asked. But honestly, 55,000 gallons per day is, is a very small amount compared to the overall water supply that the city of Framingham has. And they have their supply through the MWRA, which has an ample supply of water. So it's, it's highly likely that the, the city of Framingham could provide and does provide to other communities that about them water and, and a fair amount more if, if requested, but that, that has not been requested of the city of Framingham.
Right. And the reason obviously I'm asking the question is that to a certain extent, this amount of water is being used as a way to kind of limit the, the potential uses of it in town. And, and it's not clear to me that that should be the way that we limit things in town. In other words, I'm wildly in favor of, of water and sewer coming to North Sherburne. I, I think it's a terribly, terribly important thing for us to do and I really want us to do it. But where I, I get into difficulty is when we start zoning using the availability of water and sewer. And it feels a little bit like that might be going on here where we go to Framingham and we say, well, we only want 50,000 or 60,000 gallons because we don't want to have to deal with folks asking for more. And to me, that's not the right governance. We should have a by right zoning rules. And assuming that the town gets into safe harbor with this project, which it certainly seems like the town will get into safe harbor if this project is built. Then all that the water and sewer could be used for in North Sherburne in terms of additional development would be by right development. And I personally am not opposed to by right development and using additional water and sewer resources. But I, I, I think water and sewer coming to town is just critical. We've got to learn as a community how to have water and sewer. And I completely agree that that makes us all kind of from a public health perspective safer. And I think we should do it and we shouldn't fear it. But we also, excuse me, also shouldn't use that availability and intentionally limiting the availability of it in town as a way to express our pro or anti-development feelings in town. People who have property have by right rights. And I think by intentionally limiting upfront the water that we ensure that we ask for, we're doing our town a real disservice. And so that's, I wanted to say that. And then the, the other question that I don't, and it's sort of a related question is, I don't understand why all homes in the, in the area of the pipes shouldn't be included in the origination of the district and nobody has to pay anything under that scenario. If they choose, they can sign up and they can pay whatever it costs to, to hook up. And that's a really good thing for these homeowners to do that. It's gonna on the margin increase the value of their properties. And I'm not even talking about increasing their development opportunities. I'm just talking about making their property better by having town water and sewer. This is an important public resource. And I guess I don't understand why leave all of those properties out of the district at the get go. Why shouldn't they be included? And, you know, Marion said, oh, well, it'll be easy for the property owners to get it. Well, I don't know that I've ever experienced anything that requires a vote of the select board and of some commission that by the way will be controlled by Toll Brothers. I don't want Toll Brothers telling me as a property owner whether I can hook into the water and sewer. And frankly, you know, what if somebody in the select board doesn't like me? I'm not the, you know, the most popular guy in town. And the select board votes against my getting water and sewer. What's the reason to have that process? Where as a property owner, you know, there are multiple property owners in the district on the call here tonight. Why should we have to ask for permission to, to be allocated a public service? And it will not cost Toll Brothers anymore if all of the properties in North Sherburne are included in the origination and they have a by right opportunity to get water and sewer for existing uses. And I'll, I'll leave it at that. Thank you all very much for listening.
Okay, Sean's got to respond, but Marion, do you want to respond? And then Sean has a
Yeah, I, I just want to respond to the first part of Bob's questioning. And that is the, the volume that we're requesting from Framingham. Actually, just to add a little to what Jeremy said, I did sit in on the, some of the discussions with Framingham. And the 55 or 60 gallon per day figure actually includes all of the abutters at current use. So the abutters were, were not cut out there. That's just the baseline. We have to have it. But if, for potentially for the, for the abutters. But also Framingham does have their own constraints. I mean, their pipes go to this part of Framingham. It's not the total MWRA that goes through Framingham. That's a number they're worried about. It's the size of the pipes that are going and coming from Kendall Street in, in Framingham. And it's not only the water that's a limiting factor, it's the sewer pipe going back into Framingham. That's a, actually a bigger limiting factor because the size of the sewer pipe and the age and condition is, is a problem for Framingham. So they did talk about some value above and beyond the 50 or 55 gallons that's needed. But they hadn't decided what the capacity actually would be. Is that correct? Jeremy, they talked about a potential percentage above that.
That, that's correct, but I, I think that, you know, additionally, the, the city of Framingham, just to provide the water to another entity, another you know, legal entity, whether it be a district or a town, they need to know, they need to have some, some framework for that. They need to have a number. So, but there's no reason that that number can't be renegotiated. The IMA could be reopened at a, at a later date if the parties found the need to do that. So, you know, this is the initial IMA, this, this would be the initial agreement. This would be the initial, you know, volume anticipated and the initial volume anticipated and the cost paid to the city of Framingham for that volume. But there's no reason not to think that the IMA could be reopened at a later date, should, should the parties wish to do so. By way of approvals, I think we might be getting a little bit of semantics as far as who's in the district, who's out of the district and approvals, but there, there's always some sort of approver process to connect, even if, you know, a property exists in a fully watered community, there's always a process to get a permit to connect. You, you just can't do it in the dead of night and connect. You know, you need to apply for a permit to connect to a water system. So that, you know, the, the utility knows that you're building it per their standard, that you're not going to impact public health and safety. You know, there, there is always a, an approval process, you know, regardless. So we may, maybe we're getting a little semantics as far as who's in and who's out and when.
Well, I'm completely, Jeremy, of a, of a regulatory process for that. It's the political process I object to, right? The, the vote of the, of the select board or the vote of the, of the commission, which is, is Toll Brothers.
The commission will not be Toll Brothers, Bob. The commission will be the Independent Water and Sewer Commission.
But Toll Brothers will have three seats by, by what you've written in the legislation.
Well, the, the largest users will have three seats, but presumably Toll Brothers is going to sell these developments and, and be on their way.
Well, not the rental building for sure. They, they have to keep that or, well, maybe.
Not, they could sell that too.
It'll be some corporate entity.
Okay, let's let Sean weigh in here.
Yeah, some of my comment got stolen. Jeremy touched on some, I just wanted to make a point that you can't, they can't just write a blank check. There's a lot of money that's spent on engineering capacity studies. So there has to be some limit that that person that's choosing to pay for that engineering study, what's into it? Because to say that Framingham could give us 200,000 gallons, you know, the cost, the mitigation cost inside of Framingham may go up exponentially. And you can't expect the developer to pay for that for the hypothetical that they might regain it later. It has to be built to some capacity and that's, that's what was, it's not zoning related at all. It's based on a serious estimate of what, what could be used and what should be used right now.
Okay, thanks Sean. Is there any other select board questions or input?
Could I, could I ask for Tom Mullins' opinion on the, the delineation of the boundaries of the district? I mean, I understood Tom that there's a reason that we have to define the district and the district service areas upfront. Is that correct?
Well, I think as we've been most recently talking about it, we're going to have some kind of line, like the dotted red line that you showed on your screen earlier, that I've been referring to as the Mason Dixon line. And the idea is everything south of that is out of the district for sure. Everything above it, north of it is potentially within the district. But then in order to actually get water or sewer service, you have to apply if you are above the Mason Dixon line. As for Mr. Murchison's suggestion that everybody who is a current abutter, whether they choose to participate initially or not, be deemed a, a member of the, of the, the district, their property be a member of the district. We could talk about that. I don't I, I, it's, it's not an idea that is presumptively out of the question. I think at the start, we, we began this process by thinking we want to make sure that the system isn't overloaded and we've kind of evolved our thinking since then to recognize that there may be a lot of people north of the Mason Dixon line who want to participate.
Okay. All right. So I don't see any other select board input. So Allison, you've had your hand up for a while. Could you just identify yourself, please? And then share your question?
Yes, of course. My name is Allison Mitchell, I E Kaloie, and I live at 121 Coolidge Street. I've got my toddler next to me. So if you hear ukulele noises or talking, that's what he's doing to contribute. I had a question about, maybe it's the definition of a butter that's being used. Is it the properties that abut the potential location of this development or the land, the owners that abut anything along the water or sewer lines that would run through the North Sherburne area? I was just curious about how we were using the word a butter.
It's a, it's a property that abuts the water and sewer line. So yes, you would be an butter.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. I just didn't know how we were using that term. I'm sorry if I missed that earlier in the meeting.
That answer your question?
Yes, thank you so much.
You bet. Good luck with the concert.
Yes, thank you.
Eileen, can you hear me? And could you, could you also?
Could you hear me?
We can hear you perfectly. Could you identify yourself and ask your question, please?
Well, I can get louder too. I'm Eileen Gagin. I'm at 36 Kendall Avenue. And we do already have some Framingham water here. My grandfather moved the town line specifically to take care of his property many moons ago. I have some concerns about the Toll Brothers or any conglomerate, they should sell their development to having so much power in this side of town. Between my siblings and myself and the Badgers, we owe almost everything from the Framingham town line to Coolidge Street. And we're all getting old. We all have much more property than we know what to do with. And we could hypothetically want to put 150 units in all of our yards. And we kind of look into it's the future in this, you know? I would need more than 50 gallons a day if I made this place into, God forbid, apartments or something, or even say six or seven other homes where I am. And yeah, I, I would like to investigate the future and see if there could be some assurances made to those of us who are just keeping our property because we love it, you know? It's an emotional slumber that we're in, you know? And I, I, I feel this is a real concern and something we're entitled to have some information and, and power over deciding what happens to the neighborhood.
Do you want to add anything to that, Marion? Because you've got a lot of provisions about, you know, the board and also I think you've got a presentation that's going to be shared with the community also, separate from the memorandum of agreement.
Right. There, there is a, a much more, well, a somewhat more detailed explanation that's going to be on the town website. If the, if the, it sounds like it should be after tonight, you could look at it and give us your input. And Eileen, I, I did talk to your brother because, to Jim, because I think it's really important that, that you guys understand what we are trying to do and what we understand what, how you guys are thinking. So, you know, I look forward to having that conversation. But the, the fact remains that you know, Bob made a good point. How, how do we control development in town? Well, we have our zoning laws and all the boards and committees that things have to go through. But what we're trying to do here is find a way to give the town a chance to have some input on how that water and sewer are going to be used in the future.
One more thing, you know, in addition to the Toll Brothers, I think just some people who have been here for a long time, if not generations, should have some what do you call it, seniority at the table and, and oh, I have too many words in my head right now. If the conversation is to be continued, I will be part of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. And we could also talk as a subgroup or, you know, if you want to just have a member sort of sit down with you, that's fine. And it'll be, I'm sure the advisory public hearing will be informative too. And it'll be, I'm sure the advisory public hearing will be informative too. Okay, do that. You're all set, Eileen? I'm going to lower lower your hand if you don't mind. I don't see any other hands raised, so um I think I think that's a good description of where we are. And as you said, we're all this information will be posted on the website, Marion. So I think we can turn to um for those of us who joined the meeting late, we adjusted the agenda to consider article item five on the agenda after item two. So our next agenda item is uh there the 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 water district is the main reason for having a fall town meeting, but there's a few other articles that we probably would have deferred to spring if we weren't having a meeting, but there are a few other articles there and um there's a five or six, the list hasn't been finalized, and I think that we agreed on September seventh, we would sign off on the warrant is my understanding. So Jeremy, do you want to walk through the ones that are being considered? Uh you got a short list there, I think, don't you?
Sure, yeah, uh let me let me do that for you. Um I'll get okay if I share my screen?
Absolutely.
Jeremy, while you're doing that, I just want to tell people that i- if you have concerns or questions uh about this, and I I know I Eileen and some of her family do. Um you can uh email the town administrator who's been leading this charge. And he'll he'll get it to the group and we'll get out there and talk to you.
Yeah, yeah, I'm happy to chat and and just talk with anyone that that has interest and um and get them answers. So um the board at one of their last meetings did open um and decide to open um the warrant for this fall special town meeting um to be held in October. So the warrant is currently open. Um the board decided to have the warrant close October seventeenth. Uh August, September seventeenth at five o'clock. Um I'd noted at your last meeting that I did a quick screen of town staff to see if there was any items that might be advantageous to include uh in the the warrant for the town meeting uh in October. And I got it's a handful of of suggestions. Um and tonight I've provided some more information on those. Uh there we have not developed the the wording for the warrant yet. Um I would like to get your input as far as which items you think we should continue to include in the the town meeting warrant. Um and then, you know, be able to queue up for your September seventh meeting um for you to vote on the warrant language. Um it'll be, you know, fully um developed by that point um and also available um in draft form for further discussions at your next meeting in August. Uh but there there the primary reason for calling the special town meeting was to consider the North Sherburne Water Sewer District. As part of that project, the current developer would also like to uh request a revision to the preliminary development plan for Meadowbrook Commons. That's the age restricted uh project. Um they're proposing a slightly different square footage than was presented at the town meeting in two thousand seventeen of which the town supported. Um however, it's it's still the same number of units, same number of bedrooms. Uh they've looked at the current market and, you know, uh the developer will provide a a lot more information um for the planning boards uh select board and and prior to the advisory hearing to 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 help back up their requests and support the request for this revised preliminary development plan, which gets approval by town meeting. And that kind of sets sort of a a sort of a controlling limit on that development. So that would be a second warrant article. Several others that were were discussed or brought up for consideration was to sunset or sort of um replace the town traffic safety committee. That's committee was established by bylaw that's in the town bylaws separately from that, the select board has to has uh charter for a public safety committee. Um that information is in your packet as far as the charters of those two committees. So, chapter seven of the town bylaw established the town traffic safety committee that was included in nineteen sixty-five. Um it's my understanding this committee does not meet on a regular basis and and hasn't had a regularly scheduled meeting for for quite some time. Um but separately from that, the select board uh created these are the current members. Actually, we just had one member resign, Ten Young, just recently stepped down from this this committee. So that he could serve on advisory. The select board did um form this public safety committee, which has a broader represent- said representation. Um there's appointees from the select board and other ex officio members uh that and it has a broader charter. So there's um thought that these two committees really have overlapping um responsibilities and that uh we could get um we could possibly uh sort of sunset the town traffic safety committee and include their prior functions within this this committee. So that was an idea uh for a warrant article. Guess tonight it would be helpful to get the input from the select board, what what ones items you'd like to include in the warrant. And then at a at a later date, we could go through as we as we have traditionally done and go through your specific support or or not support for a warrant article. Uh we can do that at a subsequent meeting, but looking for your input as far as including this as an item for the the fall town meeting.
Yeah, uh Stephen?
Uh yeah, my general question is, uh you know, basically with all of the additional things, um is there a timing issue um that makes it necessary to put them in the fall town meeting as opposed to the um annual town meeting? I mean, I know when I was on advisory, uh we had, remember, there was two or three fall town meetings. Um and generally, the goal was to try to keep those um pretty short and limited to the necessary things. Um I think there was one year that there was maybe twelve or thirteen um articles on the fall town meeting and it would just, it it was just way too long. Um so I I my my overarching question is, you know, is it necessary to have, you know, each agenda item, each article on this uh warrant, or could they actually just be pushed off to the spring?
Uh great question, uh Steve. Most I would say, you know, other than the two um articles for the Water Sewer District and Meadowbrook Commons Revised Preliminary Development Plan. I would say, in my opinion, there's only one other one that that the select board should consider as a sort of a timely action, and that would be to reappropriate capital funds that that are in surplus uh from the Pine Hill Access Road and the transfer station paving to reappropriate those to be used to um either specifically for the roundabout at Washington Maple Street or roadways in general. Generally, to to be used to support that project to reconstruct that intersection.
On that table, Jeremy, just interrupting you, I think that's a typo. It should be appropriate two hundred thousand Dover Sher- roof restoration, right? Not two hundred dollars?
I can describe, I can get into the on that detail. That's a separate.
Two hundred dollars.
It is two hundred dollars. Apparently, there was a typo at the in the the warrant for the two thousand twenty-two annual town meeting when it appropriated the capital for that um project. So there's there's a an accounting uh issue that we need to correct at some point.
Okay, all right. I'm misunderstanding.
Again, you know, that item, uh you know, rescinding the capital appropriation for Woodhaven. Um yes, that is something that we should would take should take care of. It's a cleanup item along with the two hundred dollars um for the Dover Sher- roof restoration. However, there's no timeline associated with that. That could be deferred to the the spring town meeting. Sunsetting the traffic safety committee, rescinding the dog fund. And um the capital budget committee membership could certainly all be deferred to the town, the spring town meeting without any adverse impact. But the reappropriation of those capital funds would allow us to um hopefully um with those monies and the monies that we have uh reserved already for the roundabout. And, you know, cross your fingers, we get some additional funding from the Commonwealth. It would put us in a position to be able to construct those improvements uh starting in the spring.
I think the only thing about the way the traffic safety came up, Stephen, was with the complaints about traffic on Coolidge Street. So we all of a sudden had traffic safety complaints and we were realizing that we had this situation where we have two committees with overlapping responsibilities. So I don't think we'd
Detail, if you will, Jeff, on the 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 remaining two I haven't touched on, the the sunset or rescind the dog fund.
Yeah.
This section of the town's bylaw is asked that funds from dog licensing and and the like go into a dog fund. But mass general law, financial finance general law um doesn't allow it to do so. So it all, this all rolls to free cash as revenues. So this this dog fund has never been utilized um as it was stated in the bylaws, which it's really an extra step that is just really of no value. Um so we would propose to to do away with that requirement in the bylaw. It hasn't been done in the past and it's not required by uh by mass general law accounting.
Gosh, I was hoping we could fund the roundabout for the dog.
And the capital budget committee membership uh was an idea to increase the membership of that committee from three to five. Uh as as current, that a three-member committee, as you know, is it can be difficult with open meeting law and um and and having enough quorum to hold meetings and so forth. And, you know, the the charter of that committee and so forth, so um that I did some research for you. That's included in your packet as far as how some other communities um you know, consider and have set up their capital budget committees or their like, and it certainly varies by community. Um most, all the ones I screened had a larger committee than three. Um and it had various membership, some appointed by select board, some appointed by moderator, some ex officio members, certain town staff. Um some had more or less charter and specifics uh granted to them. So I think, you know, that could the conversation for this capital budget committee membership might be something that the town would probably benefit from having a little bit more time to to discuss um and vet. And there may not be that opportunity prior to the the special town meeting to to fully vet that, but
Relooking at their process too, in addition to the membership, I think, so it's probably timely. So Paul, I'm sorry, I know you've been waiting.
So I had some comments. Uh first on the revised preliminary development plan. That's been concerned from residents expressed to me about an effort to eliminate the fact that this is over fifty-five year housing. And so I'm going to ask the question on their behalf. Is this going to involve changing this housing from over fifty-five to something else?
No. No. Okay, this is quite simple um in that they're requesting a a change in the square footage that was approved at the town, the special, I mean, the at the town meeting in two thousand seventeen. Um no other uh changes are being requested.
Okay, and then the the next comment is the capital budget committee membership. The the town has just done some changes there and we work with uh Corey Lincoln, I believe on that. And I don't want to go forward with something without involving the membership of the current capital budget committee. And I would note that the the idea of putting a selectman on the capital budget committee I think is wrong for this town. It's contrary to the culture of the town where you don't put on either advisory or capital budget, somebody who's got a vested active of the sea interest in projects. So if I want to, you know, build some building and I'm on this committee, that that isn't the way we want our committees to run. So I would I would oppose putting selectmen on the capital budget committee. And going from three to five. I would note that most of my towns have three-member committees and even three-member boards of selectmen. One of the reasons why they don't go to five is that they find it hard to get the number of volunteers to serve on all the boards and committees. And so if if I take that experience and that explanation from these other towns, my question to you would be are all our committees fully loaded? And if the answer is no, we have vacancies left and right. Then the advice, the accumulated advice from other communities would be then you your committees are too large, reduce the size of your committees, reduce the number of volunteers that you need to have. I just passed that on generally. So I'm I'm very dubious about this capital budget committee rewrite here. Uh the next thing I would comment on is that we're send the dog fund. And as a lawyer, I would say we absolutely need to do that. That should have been done years ago. And so that's something that I think we should do and we should do properly. It's just tying up money that doesn't need to be tied up. It's not consistent with the general laws. And I would recommend as a lawyer, that we fix that defect in our bylaws. Then on the issue of the traffic safety committee. They are not the same interest between the public safety committee and the town traffic safety committee. If you look carefully at the traffic safety committee, that consists basically of residents. It's sort of public input, whereas the public safety committee is basically the brass. The the uh department heads, the leaders, the the uh the the people who are town employees are already actively involved with with uh governments somewhere. So they're they they represent entirely different constituents. And there have been times that the traffic safety committee has taken position on on policies uh inconsistent with with uh the wishes of the board of selectmen and the the uh the uh what I call the command staff. But it represents an important public input. Only these are the the voting members are 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 just ordinary citizens of the town. They have available to them, the 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 town command staff. But still, it's a different, it's entirely different constituency. So I I I don't see the overlap there at all. Uh and I can tell you offline all kinds of stories about how important their input has been from the point of view of the residents of the town being essentially the presenting a point of view that we didn't know about until we heard from them. These capital appropriations. Generally, my advice on capital appropriations is that the best way to do it is with a new appropriation. That is just rescinding an appropriation doesn't do anything to advance another project. And this is the first I've heard that reappropriating the capital funds was for a roundabout. And generally, the way one does that is is to present it to the voters that we're going to do a roundabout. And here's how we're going to fund it. And amongst all items that we're going to use to fund it includes reappropriating capital funds. So that's that's not a a essentially a reappropriation of capital funds. It's a warrant article to build a roundabout and fund it in part by using this money. I don't have a problem with a roundabout article and presenting it to the voters. But if we are going to present it, I'd I'd like to have all the funding in place. So the voters can see all at once what the cost is and what the funding sources are. And as I understand it, we're we're waiting on the legislature for an important piece of that funding. So wouldn't it make better sense to do this when we have that piece? Or are you saying we're going to have that piece by October seventeenth? If we're going to have that piece by October seventeenth, then then I don't have a problem with with going forward and doing that. So those are my comments on the changes. So uh, to summarize, I would. Support. Eliminating the dog fund. I would defer on everything else other than the two primary purposes for which we're having the town meeting.
Good input, Paul. Thank you.
Yes, the funding on the the roundabout funding, um. We should know um on a on a, we submitted an application for a grant for five hundred thousand dollars. We should hear about that. Um, sometime in October, so it's it. It may be very. Similar in timing to the when we find out if we've been granted those those funds um in in the lead up to town meeting, so.
I guess though.
Successful and having those funds granted to us, then we would be in a position to construct a roundabout in the spring.
Okay, then I changed my pos- position on that, that if if we're going to have that. If we're able to present the whole picture, then I'm all in favor of that if. But if we're going to do the construction in the spring, presumably, we're going to have a spring town meeting and. And maybe it's going to be the last week in April. So if we appropriate the funds at that time. Where. Are we really going to do this construction in March and February?
We'll have the contracts in in place and and geared up to, you know, earlier. We we would just be more, we'd have the the funds sort of in hand. Um, sooner to be able to do um the planning and and get a contract in place sooner. Uh, but. Uh, and April town meeting, sure, and their construction could begin a a bit later than um if funds were granted at the fall town meeting.
Do we have an idea to Paul's point, though? Do we have an idea on what the? Scoping cost is in total and aggregate and then identify the sources of those funds?
We do, it's the current cost estimate is one point two million.
Yep.
And, you know, we have a a prior grant for complete streets of about. Two to three hundred thousand dollars.
Yep.
Um, and actually Sean has his hand up. He might have the finances a little better, more accurate than I do, but we we still have a shortfall. Uh, of about five hundred thousand dollars. The other thing that we're waiting for, that that is another potential source of funds. Uh, are the the town's chapter ninety funds that just recently the legislature uh. Approved the chapter ninety uh bond bill. Um, and some of the and a supplemental uh and the budget that included that some of the use of the millionaire's tax. Um, to help supplement transportation funding, so we're not exactly sure how much funds we're going to be receiving from that. Uh, but those funds, should the town desire to use them towards the roundabout, could help finance the roundabout as well. Um, if if we did not get this grant for five hundred thousand dollars and wished to commit some of our chapter ninety dollars and the additional. Chapter ninety um and transportation forms from the Commonwealth. Uh, in addition to this uh reuse of. Of prior capital monies, we could also be in a position to to start the construction of the roundabout in the spring.
I'm just very aware.
John, or go ahead, go ahead, Paul.
I'm just very wary of having the voters think, gee, we give them a hundred thirty-five thousand. We're done and and then low and behold. The annual town meeting, we come in and we say, oh, wow, we we're going to need another. Multiple of that to do this project, and some people might say. Gee, if we knew it was going to cost this amount of money, we wouldn't have voted the hundred and thirty-five.
Yeah, no.
You really need to present the whole thing.
Yep, no, it's a good point.
Which which we can.
John, do you want to uh straighten it out here?
Yeah, excellent. I'd like to, um. And I want to compliment Paul that it's actually brilliant that he brought that up and articulated it that way. The so just. The voters don't have this in hand yet because we haven't presented it, but just so everyone understands the timeline, we we have a complete design. Um, it it hasn't been totally vetted, but it's it's there. The. Everything we know is that we we need to basically have a. Notice to proceed around the first of the year. To be able to procure everything and be ready for a July first start. We have to do the roundabout in July and August because it's going to be very disruptive and we really can't do it during the school year with the bus bus route, so. The 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 goal would be to secure the funding in late fall, early winter. So that we can, we can get cracking. We probably won't have. A hundred percent answer, but we 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 should be talking about how we can. How we can get there and and commit to the contract. We'll. We'll certainly know before then what the cost is because we can commit to that. Um, we have the design, we have a. You know, prior to this year, we were trying to do it before the summer. We had an estimate from the contractor. We we have an open contract with the. With Lynch, who did the work on on Woodland Street, so we can have a firm number. And we can have firm numbers on all the materials that need to be ordered, so. We we should be, that should be a goal for this fall town meeting to commit some of the money. We certainly have enough chapter ninety money and we could reassign some of the money from the annual town meeting. Um, that that we have, that we're sitting on. For this purpose, so that we can commit. And go into next year knowing what we're doing, because we we can't go into this project with any uncertainty on the funding and we just won't have time to do it.
I think that's a good point. Did we uh, did it include some ARPA funding? I thought we had a portion of the ARPA funding assigned to that too. Is that the design?
No, we didn't. We have, it's complete streets money, and I think that he might might know better, but it's more like three, I think it's three hundred and sixty thousand. Uh, that's committed from the state. And again, everyone knows we get about two sixty-three a year uh for chapter ninety and the, you know. The select board can vote to use that at any time. That's already available this year and then, of course, there's more that's. Not guaranteed, but almost guaranteed for July first. And they will let you spend that. They will let you commit that in anticipation. Once you know what your level's going to be.
Yeah, so we can lay out and and give you more detail as far as the anticipated costs. Um, and what we currently have in hand, what is a question mark as far as grant funding? Um, however, the, you know, reuse of these two prior capital appropriations towards the roundabout would certainly help us um. You know, secure funds to to be able to do an earlier start or or a start next year on the roundabout.
So I would suggest holding this over to another meeting and in the meantime, if you could get us. Sort of a chart of what the expenses and what the anticipated revenue sources are, something like that. And then pick this discussion up again.
Can do.
Yeah, that would be the twenty-fourth because we want to close the warrant on the seventh, which is the meeting after that, so. August twenty-fourth, we would probably have to have the discussion. That makes sense, Jeremy.
Yep, it does.
So I think we're done there. You could probably stop sharing. Is there something I'm, did I forget something?
No, and is that, is that, is this the general consensus as far as the other warrant articles of the select board?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I guess the traffic safety, Paul made some good points. I actually looked back through it. It does. It has the police chief and the fire chief, but they're non-voting members to his point. The only thing is it hasn't met in two or three years, so I'm sure we've had traffic issues and we we may be by default. Referring things to public safety or just having police and fire take care of them without a committee looking at them. I don't know, but.
So I'd like to have town council start working on the warrant language uh with us, so. You know, getting some guidance as far as which ones we should want to carry forward with.
I don't think the traffic safety seems like something that's urgent. We we were planning to do it just because we hadn't. It seemed to have atrophied to to there was nothing there, but it probably makes sense to. Not spend time in this fall on trying to straighten that out. And the capital thing he's talked about, we just want, all we want to do is kind of get a picture on all the requirements for the. Uh, roundabout and all the sources.
Yep.
Dog fund we should go ahead with, as he pointed out, and capital budget, I don't think that's. I know they're working on sort of reorganizing, but. I'm not sure if we've thought that through enough for the fall, you know. Maybe let's see what Dan thinks. Nope, he just put his hand.
Just just a quick, just a quick comment following on what Steve said earlier. Uh, which would be from an advisory perspective, a preference for a, you know, a slim warrant and really focusing on the things that. Absolutely need to be done this fall. Um, advisory will do whatever advisory needs to do, but. For that process, there are a lot of Ts to cross and Is to dot in a relatively short amount of time, so.
Yeah, I think it's the the Cooley Street, the two on Coolidge, Meadowbrook revision or adjustment in Water District. The um capital for the roundabout and rescinding the dog fund, which is, I guess, a. No brainer because it doesn't really exist or.
Right, right, uh, yeah.
Four items.
Yeah, so that sounds, that sounds good. Slimmer sounds better.
Okay, now to address your question, you have a different question, Stephen.
Uh, no, a different question, uh, because I thought that the um. I thought the warrant was closing on August seventeenth.
No, I I think.
I know we wanted to finalize the language in September, but I I thought that the actual warrant was closing on the seventeenth.
I I guess, I guess we don't sign it then. I don't know, is Jackie on here?
It, the warrant would be closed. Currently, you you voted to close it on August seventeen. I'm not sure if Jackie is is on or not and.
But we're not signing the warrant, I don't think, until September seventh.
That's correct.
Closing of the word is more about not allowing other articles either by citizens or by the town to be added.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, so we could, so we could leave some things on there and then drop them off. Between August seventeenth and September seventh.
Yes, right, is that, are you cool with that, Jackie?
Yes.
Okay, we just can't add, I guess, is what we're releasing.
Correct, unless you open the warrant.
You you can always vote to open the warrant again and then close it. Um, however, it's best to just kind of set a date so that you give the public. Your expectations.
We don't have to open the warrant to delete items that were in the preliminary version, I don't think, do we? To remove items?
Just revote your your vote.
Okay. Paul, is your hand still up from before, or do you have a a new question?
No, I I don't, but I'm in agreement with what was just said, that that on this round of roundabout article. It's already on the sheet of paper.
Yep.
And while I had said originally not to go forward with it because I didn't know what the funding was, I'm open to going forward with it based on what Sean had to say. So I don't want it deleted now, but I don't, I don't want it adopted now. I'm asking for it to be deferred for a further discussion, but that doesn't mean that. That relates at all to closing the warrant. It's it's already on the list.
Yeah.
So I would consider it's it's past that piece.
Right, so on the twenty-fourth, we'll discuss a a more wholesome view of the. Sources and uses of funds for the whole project.
Yep. Thank you, Jeff. Well said on this article.
All right, thanks. All right. And just on share so we can see everybody, please, and then um. I got Eric back in here, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. Where did you go? There you are, you ran away. And I'm going to put Paul's hand down.
Yes, thank you.
I got you. No worries. We got you covered there. And we're getting organized. I think we're good, so we're now uh. Moving on to uh. Our item four on the agenda, which is the OPEB funding policy. Oh, no, I I apologize. Item three, which was the bond anticipation note, Heidi, they're both you, but. In the order of a bond anticipation and then OPEB, OPEB.
Okay, thank you. So this is, uh, we are rolling over last year's items that we had done a one-year borrowing anticipation note on. Um, and we are adding in the roadwork that we approved in the spring. That's the only item we're adding into this amount. We went out for bid. Today, we had the sale. We got five bids um. And the winner of the bid is TD Securities that came in at three point six seven three percent was the NIC. Uh, just for your frame of reference, last year, what we bid, we got was three point four two. So it it went up a little bit, but not as much as I was expecting in this market, so. I think. Yeah. Yeah, I think for what it is, I'm very happy with the. Outcome, uh, so then I'm looking for, you have the list of items there. I'm just looking forward to the motion that I've got worded here and to add in the items that we're awarding it to TD Securities. Uh, and then to also get when you can come in and sign it. Um, I don't know Monday if people are going to be coming in for. To town hall for the employee picnic or town hall picnic that I can circulate then and grab some signatures, or if you would like to. Have someone sign on your behalf, that's fine. But. So I guess I'll I'll say the motion should be moved to award the bond anticipation note for three million one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars. Per library building project. ATM twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three capital items to 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 TD Securities.
So moved.
Yeah, second, I'll second it, keep it moving here. Um, so Eric.
I.
Steven.
I.
Marion.
I.
Oh.
Hi.
I am as well. I can't, I had just found out today, I have to be at Dana Farber for a meeting with their senior team, so I can't come on Monday, but. Can I sign it on Friday? Will it be ready tomorrow or not?
They they're sending it sometime Friday, early afternoon, so I could let you know when.
In the morning Monday, maybe I can come in. I I like signing in person, but the 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 people want to include in the motion uh having. Diane or Jeremy sign for us?
I got that for you.
Or do you want, do you mind signing it?
I could sign uh tomorrow afternoon possibly, but I cannot sign next week until Wednesday.
I realized tomorrow afternoon, um, so Jackie needs to witness people signing. So no, no one will be there in the afternoon for it, even if I get it, so. Um, Monday, if we could try and arrange during the day Monday, anytime I could do that.
But Marion can't do that. Do you need all of our signatures?
Three, three of you.
I can stop by pretty easily, so.
Yeah, I'll and I'll be there on Monday, so.
All right, then we'll have three on Monday.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
So do you want to go on to OPEB?
Yes. So um, looking back when I was going through preparing for this bond um anticipation notes, one of the. That people came back with a lot of several questions and it was a little more in depth. And they were asking about our OPEB policies and if we had a reserve funding policy and it's like, oh, yes, we did. And when I went back and looked. We went through a bunch of meetings with the select board and advisory. We had formed the OPEB trust. We actually have an investment policy that was approved by everyone. But the OPEB funding policy, I only had a formal approval from advisory, so I was just seeing if. It's a very simple policy. It can be changed at any time. The advantage to having a written policy is this helps with um our our calculation when they we go for. What our liabilities are and it helps showing that we have a plan and it helps our discount rate. That they can calculate that we plan to switch over to funding and this is twenty thirty-seven where we will switch funds. So it's kind of a good policy to have and I just, we may or may not need to have a formal vote, but I thought it would actually be better for. Historical records to show that the select board was on record for approving the funding policy.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I guess we told the triple A bond rated people that we had one, I think, so.
Well, which we we do, it's a question of. If we have.
Well, do you want to uh propose language?
Yes, move to approve the OPEB. Other post-employment benefits, funding policy as previously approved by the advisory board.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Eric.
I.
Even.
I.
Marion.
I.
Paul.
I.
I am I as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. And uh Jeremy or Diane, who's to do in the Richard Robinson appointment to the Agricultural Commission?
Um, I can. Richard Robinson um has asked to be reappointed to the Agricultural Commission. And um he has the full board of the commission behind him, asking the selectmen to consider his reappointment with re-a term.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Eric.
I.
Even.
I.
Marion.
I.
Well.
Hi.
And I might as well. He's he's a terrific member. Uh, consent agenda, is there a motion with respect to consent agenda?
We have approval.
Um, I actually, uh, what do you call it? Have an edit. That's the one with the um meeting minutes, right?
Just the meeting of seven twenty-seven.
Yep, and you added the thing, Diane, thank you very much, stated that I that um I stepped out of the meeting, stepped back in. Yep, and you added the thing, Diane, thank you very much stated that um I stepped out of the meeting, stepped back in. Only minor thing is the vote. It says Eric Johnson staying. I think it should say recused. I'm not sure which is correct there.
That sounds better. I agree with you.
You know what I mean? Almost implies like I voted, so it shouldn't be four oh one. It should be four oh.
Yeah, yeah.
When I say there should be no one, because I didn't I didn't say I recuse or I whatever.
All right, I'll I'll make that change, Eric, tomorrow.
And I don't know if past minutes have the same thing. I'll be willing to go back and look at past minutes, but I just want a very clear record that, you know, I step out. And I don't vote at all.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's a good correction.
So I move approval of the consent agenda with the amendment to the minute says articulated by. Select board member.
Is there a second? All right, Eric.
I.
Even.
I.
Marion.
I.
Wow.
Hi.
I as well. That's good. Are there any select board reports?
Uh, I have one. Uh, if I may.
Go ahead, you may.
All right. Uh, I noticed that at the uh on August first, the zoning board of appeals had their first meeting. Uh, to consider the comprehensive permit for the forty B development on Farm Road called Farm Road Homes. And I'm sure you all saw that on the schedule. I think Jeff and I were present, but I don't think others were, so I thought I would just. Uh, point out that. Uh, they are, that was the first meeting and the next one will be September sixth. This is a, I think the total time that they have to review this is a hundred and twenty days or so, so.
Hundred and eighty, I believe, that is six. I think it's six months roughly, hundred eighty days, I believe.
Okay, so I think we're we're in the second month now and it's going to be starting soon. So I just wanted to kind of alert people that it's worth taking a look at the website under land development because um. You'll find there the the letter that we wrote to uh mass housing. Uh, with the the various concerns and opinions of the various boards and committees, pros and cons. Um, and uh, the. Mass Housing came back with the letter back to us uh and to the developer. Advising the developer on what should be covered in the comprehensive permit. Uh, process and things that they felt were outstanding uh issues that he should address. Uh, then there is the developer response to the state response that you should take a look at. And it's important to take a look at the revised site plan because it's not the same as the original one. There are important changes. And um. They include, I believe on the website, there's a PowerPoint that was presented at the September first meeting outlining the changes that have been made. So. I think we should um as a as a select board, take another look at that development. And uh and discuss it a bit. Because we can weigh in again to the zoning board. Uh, if we have important issues that we think should be brought up to the zoning board, either either supporting it or. Our concerns that we think are outstanding. And we could discuss that if there's room at the next August twenty fourth. Agenda, but uh let's see how that looks when the time comes.
So I I guess two questions about them. And I just want to clarify, people crack a front. A quorum of the select board can attend and watch that meeting, but I believe we get in trouble if we like having a discussion, obviously, if we ask a question. If we ask a question to the ZBA, it might constitute a um. A discussion, whatever else if any one of us does. So I guess, is there harm or is anything to just to be safe? Co-announce select board meetings at that time. I guess what we'd have to do, call the order and close our meeting? Is that all we would have to do to basically attend a ZBA meeting and ask questions as appropriate?
You have to have minutes.
Okay, and have minutes as well. And the ZBA would have minutes, actually. So I mean, that's that's done as well. Um, I don't know what people's thoughts and added. I would like to attend these meetings. I find them um, I find this interesting, this development and um. You know, I would like to attend or we can just coordinate who attends these things, but I might have some questions as well. So I guess I'll just leave that open statement out there. If it's worth actually, like, you know, just to be safe, co-make meetings or whatever else uh at the same time as these.
Let me ask you a question, Paul, if it's okay, because I've talked to Chuck about this in the past. If if three of us attend a meeting. That's fine, isn't as long as we don't speak.
There's an exemption to the definition. The open meeting law, which says that if a quorum of a board attends a meeting of another board that has been convened. Pursuant to the open meeting law, we're okay. Unless we cross the line of deliberating amongst ourselves. So as long as while we're there. Everything we say is to. The ZBA or whatever board we're attending, we're okay. Where it gets bad is. If someone gets up and says, I think we're opposed to it, but I'd like to know what Jeff had this feels about it and what. Eric feels about it and then bingo.
But if we ask, if one of the attending members asks a factual question of the board that's reviewing it that night, it's not a. A question of deliberation, but more understanding the uh.
No problem.
But I I bet would have to be careful if another select board member followed up on that same subject. So like, I'm gonna have a question about stormwater. I'm pretty sure, you know, that's kind of my thing, right? And then and then a few Jeff said like, oh, what about this other stormwater thing? I don't know. I just think we have to be cautious.
I I pretty much can guarantee you that I'll just listen.
Right, probably will. Uh, oh, sorry, Jeff. I I would like to attend and I will probably just, well, I can't promise, you know. So I think it might be wise if we know that three of us are attending to just. Post a select board meeting, just just to be safe. And.
Yeah, I wonder if we could actually have our own Zoom meeting, all call the order, state that we're going to the other Zoom meeting, get on there. Come back and then close the meeting or something like that. I don't know, you know, it's open and closing, which is might be disruptive to the ZBA meeting. You know, if it was all in like one room, we just go to a corner somewhere.
Maybe have our own meeting minutes from.
We have a meeting on August twenty fourth. If there's room on that agenda, we could discuss it then. Uh, the next ZBA is until September sixth, so maybe we can put this decision off until the twenty fourth.
Okay, yeah, that's something to think about. Maybe make an item out of it. That'd be nice. So my hand's still raised on purpose, by the way. So I had a second. What group um has stormwater as a purview? Would it be conservation? Would it possibly be this board? If we're reviewing the stormwater plan there, I think I think they said they were gonna hire a um third-party consultant to help review it as well, but. Some involvement with that. So anyone that's involved with that or that's going to an engineer or whatever else, I don't know if it's Sean or Jeremy or both or whatever. Um, I would like.
Groundwater protect, could be groundwater protection also. Could be the Board of Health sometimes because it can affect the septic system.
Yeah, the the ground protection is largely advisory. They're not really regulatory. Board of Health is regulatory, conservation is regulatory.
Right.
Select boy, I don't know what we do.
Board of Health, I know, pays attention to to groundwater runoff relative to the septic field, I think.
And and the ZBA's peer review engineer consultant will will also assist with that review, but I'm happy to. Involve any other folks that are interested.
I'll be interested.
Right, I believe the planning board has been in charge of that because uh. It I know it's been discussed at planning board and Gino's been heavily involved.
But you see my point? It's not obvious. You know what I mean? It's just not one of those obvious things. And if you read the groundwater protection by law, I think it sticks under every board on the sun anyway, so. Sean had his hand raised. I know he un- unraised it, but I'm kind of interested in what he had, what he was gonna say.
Paul was just adding something, I think, though, Paul. What were you gonna say?
That most of our towns assign stormwater. Issues to the Conservation Commission, but there's a significant number who assign it to the planning board. I'm not aware of any other. Boards to whom these duties have been assigned.
It's definitely not Concom in Sherburne, definitely not Concom.
No, when I was on planning board, it was on planning board, so Sean can correct that, I'm sure.
One of the consistencies is in stormwaters, there's two concerns, basically. There's a long-term like NIPD's or state compliance and that there. And that often goes even to DPW and framing and stuff like that. But during construction, it's very common to do Concom. Because it has erosion controls. So it's very, very similar practices during construction, as you see within wetlands protection, even if it's an upland area. So in framing him, they actually put the um the construction aspects under um under conservation, because the same. Skill sets, same people inspecting it and the same practices as far as erosion control.
It's all a question of what the bylaw says. So Eric, he has a stormwater bylaw.
Yeah.
And in the bylaw, it's it assigns it to somebody.
Now, we assigned it to a lot, Paul. It's like, if you read it, I can't remember what it is, but it's a lot. We left it in. I don't say ambiguous, but we assigned it to everyone.
Well, then maybe we should amend the bylaw. When you assign it to everybody, that means nobody.
Well, sign it to traffic safety will be all set.
There you go.
They don't need.
I honestly wouldn't. I think twice about border health, but I I doesn't matter. It was a discussion for another time.
Avenue is, like I said, if it affects, you know, if the runoff is in the direction of the septic field.
So the whole point, the the mass stormwater protection bylaws, uh mass stormwater protection rules and regulations really largely control what's in a resource area. Uh, people keep saying, well, it's the same as NIPD's. It's not. It's absolutely not. It overlaps with conservation and stuff like that. It um. Yeah, it it's uh it's the upland areas there, so it winds up being its own beast.
Right, I'd like to hear from Sean, but I I believe it has been in the planning boards purview up till now. Go ahead, Sean.
So the review histori-, well, by the bylaw, the review is during under the planning board. It's a forty B, so it's it's under the ZBA. You you're only gonna write your opinions as the planning board. The regulatory is DPW and the planning board. During construction, as Eric has outlined, is gonna fall under the um spill protection control plan and 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 others that. Those control measures do fall under Concom and the Building Department. Um, and anything related to the uh. The MS four is planning board and. And Building Department and DPW. And and if it was in a different area, actually, no, that's Farm Road, I'm sorry. So it is in a different area. That. Uh, is also regulated in phosphorus reduction. Which it won't be, the Coolidge Street will not be, but the Farm Road is, so. That has.
I still want to talk, I still want to talk about that one there. I don't want to take this discussion. I don't want to talk too more about that one there.
Right, and so, you know, if it's under the DPW. Then uh it's under the town administrator and yourself, so. You get to have some involvement. Again, the right. It it all goes through the ZBA as far as the permit upfront, right?
Yeah, of course, but it's the advisor to ZBA, like what what board is ZBA is not gonna look at of. I don't think the ZBA is actually hiring the engineer, maybe they are. Uh, but some group like certainly like Border Health, except the stuff. The ZBA is gonna take advice from the Board of Health, you know, I mean, they're. And the Board of Health will probably work with whatever consultant to review it and blah, blah, blah.
Right, and we'll certainly have the option to use a a peer reviewer for the stormwater and that. I believe they'll be regulate, they'll be required to pay for it.
Correct, yeah, the developer would pay for that and the ZBA would retain a peer review consultant. That would carry those services. We we're, we've been scoping out that, um, those scope of services, uh. Uh, Genie and I helping the ZBA scope that out and retain that consultant.
That's all I had.
That's all you have. Anyone else have any other select board updates? As I said, don't forget the employee picnic at. Twelve thirty, twelve thirty on Monday, Diane, is that right? Twelve thirty?
Yes, it starts at twelve thirty on Monday.
Yep.
Bring a cheer with you.
I can't, I can't come unfortunately, but I'm disappointed, but it was great last year. So um Jeremy, you want to give us some TA updates?
Sure, just a couple, a couple notices for the board. Um, if you drove by North Main Street and Cool Street intersection this afternoon, you know this. Um, a longstanding ash tree had to be removed. Um. That work was conducted um today, um during, you know, not during rush hour traffic. I think the actual. Uh, traffic control and and procedure to to remove the tree went quite well. It was sad that the tree um was in the condition that it was in. Um, over the weekend, one of the limbs uh overhanging the roadway uh developed a severe crack. And so on Saturday, we had to mobilize uh some crews and to to remove that that limb. After the removal, uh, the crack widened even further in the trunk. Um, and the town town tree warden and an arborist from EverSource Electric. Um, you know, deemed the tree to be hazardous. Um, actually, Sean and I were out walking and looking at the tree with with John Douse um on Wednesday and. Well, we were, Sean was literally able to push a ruler in twenty four inches into the 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 rotted um trunk. Um, just kind of showing how uh how bad a condition it was in. But you know, you'll notice it's it's down now. Um, the the hazard's been removed. Um, it's if you're interested to see what the condition of the tree is, the the main trunk is still there on the ground. Um, and. You'll see there was not much left of the tree. It's quite amazing how much. Um, uh, had rotted out from the middle and around, not even the. You know, maybe three inches around a portion of the tree was still alive, holding up the tree, so. Um, it we we were fortunate to be able to have EverSource Electric uh move forward with that um removal timely. Um, to to help um, you know, protect public health and also that's a confluence of some major electrical feeds to the community. Um, so if that tree had come down, there would have been some some major disruption, so. Uh, just wanted to note that um and um. We've also gotten uh notice from Algonquin Gas Transmission Company that they intend to do some work at a valve that they own. Uh, the corner of Mason Hill Road and Bogastore Road. Uh, we've posted some information on the town's website, should folks be interested. Uh, however, Algonquin Gas has sent uh letters out to fourteen of Butters. Those letters went out today. With instructions uh and some description of the work and contact information uh for the work that they plan to do. Uh, they'll be doing some controlled venting of gas uh. From uh the time period of August fourteenth to the twenty first uh during uh the timeframe, seven AM, seven PM. They have coordinated and will continue to coordinate with police and fire departments. Uh, and uh if folks do have any questions about this work, they are welcome to call uh Algonquin Gas Operations. Their phone number is five oh eight nine three eight seven seven two eight. All of this information is on the front page of the town's website currently, so. Um, please visit that if if folks are are more interested in more detail or need that number again. We've received an interesting proposal um to the Conservation Commission. From the Boston Outdoor Preschool Network. They've reached out to the Conservation Commission with a proposal um to. Uh, hold some preschool classes um starting in September at the Barber Reservation. These would be outdoor preschool classes for up to twelve students. They'd have a minimum of two teachers there. Um, basically run would run the length of the school year uh in the mornings from nine AM to noon. Um, they have a proposal that they've they've put together that um has been provided the chairs of the Conservation Commission. Um, and it's my understanding the commission may start um discussing that at at some subsequent meeting, so. Uh, but I'd note that for the board, very interesting proposal um and um more to come on that. And finally.
Is that a year-round program? I'm interrupt you. Is that a year-round program, Jeremy?
During the school year from September to June. Year round, yeah, through the winter. Apparently, they do this at at several other locations.
Yeah, that's pretty.
In the in the metro area around Boston and. Uh, thought that the location at the Barber Reservation was was a good one for their program. Uh, these other locations, they are outside um the whole time through the winter.
Yeah.
Who asked for some access to some indoor space, um, that could be just a canopy. Um, they've suggested the use of the historic barn at the Barber property. But absent that, they would actually provide their own year, just to have um a small space to get undercover if they need be, but. Interesting proposal.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Get some mittens and enroll, you never know.
That's right. I wish it was available for my kid. I think they'd enjoy it. But and finally, I just wanted to pass on that the select board received a nice note from the Friends of the Sherburne Library. Um, thanking them for their support. Um, so let me read um that to you. Uh, says, dear Sherburne Select Board, thank you for supporting me, for supporting the Arts and Crafts Fair. Every step of the way and for inviting us to share the fair at the April Board Meeting. Thank you for being a quote friend. Hannah and the Friends of the Sherburne Library Board. So just wanted to relay that. Thank you to the board. That's all I've got tonight, Jeff.
Okay. Does anybody feel like making a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Right, you had to say Eric's the second, Eric. Right, we had a, Eric's the second. Eric.
I.
Even.
I.
Marion.
I.
Hi.
I am I as well. Thank you, guys.
Have a great weekend.
Yeah, you too.
You.
Take care, everyone.